Okay, we're ready.
Let me wait just another second or two and then we'll be ready. So I can be accurate in saying it's 5:15. Do we have a lot of call-ins?
We have 19 people on the call, including this group here.
Okay, good. The special virtual meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District is now called to order. It is Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. The time is 5:15 PM. Joanne, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ernst?
Here.
Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioners, instead of doing the public request before our presentation by our contractors, we're going to move it till after so that maybe this will clear up some of the questions people will have. So we'll move that. Are there any other changes you'd like to make? Okay, hearing none. Good evening, everyone. The purpose of this meeting is for the public to ask questions of Maricor Builders and their team for the design of Phase 1 of Ocean Strand. And this meeting is limited strictly to the discussion of the project at hand. So if you have any other questions, please tune into us on Monday night at 5:15. And so now I'd like to introduce Nate Custodio from Maricor Builders. Give everybody a wave, Nate. And Carol Perez from AGT Land. Everybody, I'm sure remembers Carol. The other members of the team are the ecological consultants, Dr. Don Richardson and Bermuda Landscaping, Art Scrooge. I don't think they're joining us, but I'm sure if you have questions for them, the questions will be passed on by our team who's here tonight. So, welcome Nate and Carol. And Nate, would you like to start off?
Carol and I will sort of do this together. Does everyone have a... Has everyone seen the documents we sent over for our layout? Perfect. So essentially, we have some walking paths, mulch paths, that we're going to do from Federal Highway back to the intercoastal. That's going to cut through some of the existing hammock. We'll have some of the existing vegetation, sorry, that we're going to cut back and prune back. Once you take the mulch path from A1A to the west to the intercoastal, we'll have a kayak launch, a sand kayak launch there, where we'll do some cleanup of the existing vegetation that's on the intercoastal. We'll leave quite a bit of it there that'll provide nice shade so that we could have a... some shaded seeding down by the intercoastal. Incorporated into this would be some signage, wayfinding signage throughout. And once you get up to A1A, we'll have a sign that identifies the property, the park, as well as a gate that can be opened and closed when this park is open for people to use. And when it's off-hours, close it off so no one should walk through there. I think that's about it as far as this presentation for what we have on our plan. So if you guys have any additional questions, we're ready for you.
Okay. Commissioner, would you like to start off, Mr. Ernst?
Yes. My question to Nate and Carol is, could you describe the art in public places? If that is just kind of a... is that included or for a later date? Or what were your thoughts around it?
Yeah, that would be for a later date. It was just an idea of what could transpire in the park. And we thought early on that this... the open fields are so large that sculptures could be there, or there could be a call to artists. And this could be used... artwork could be used to move people through the space if ever desired. But it's really just an idea and progression of what could happen later.
Okay.
But budget-wise, it was not included.
Not included. That's okay. That's fine. The second question I have for you, as you go through the winding trail, I assume that you're trying to work around some of the largest trees that are there. Could you describe that you've walked the trail and what your thoughts are about that?
Sure. As you come from A1A and go down, there's a slight hill. The path would go down a slight hill into the open fields. And the green... the larger green spaces, the darker green on the presentation, those are existing trees. Most of them... there's a lot of strangler figs there, which are very beautiful. We want to clean up all the Brazilian pepper in... along the fringes of those native trees. Also, the path cuts through this hammock area, which we envision cleaning up a lot of the Brazilian pepper through that area so that we could get the path through. We actually anticipate 2.6 acres of Brazilian pepper removal.
Wow.
Somewhere between 2 to 2.5, 2.6 acres. So that's a big chunk of the work that's to be done out there. But that will really showcase the native vegetation.
Okay. That's great. My last question is related to the path itself. You're kind of cutting through the open area. And I mean, I don't have any strong feelings, one way or another, about it. But I mean, I like the way it winds through things, but I also like to preserve the open area for, you know... when you put it right through the middle of an open area, then you're kind of chopping it up. Is there... what was your thought process? Is it better to be closer to the edge of the trees? Or is it safer in the open? Any particular feelings on that?
We could work on moving the walkway closer to the vegetation. I think, once we remove the pepper, to find out exactly what's in there, it's kind of hard right now to decipher what's good and what's bad because it's so thick with pepper.
Okay.
Up near A1A, it's easy to decipher because you can see... you can clearly see the strangler figs and some of the beautiful vegetation that's up there. But as you come down into the middle of the site, there's such large areas that are overgrown. But I don't see any reason why we can't keep that walkway tighter to the native vegetation once the pepper is cleaned out. And then we can keep the open spaces wider, if that's preferred.
It depends on my peers and everything. I just like the idea of having the open space as much as you can, so it can be used for frisbee or for anything. And we really haven't talked about whether there's any recreation of any kind or availability. But I certainly give you carte blanche on field design of, as you get it, you may have to make field changes and things like that. I'd just be mindful of not... just because it's the easiest path to plow up, I'd really like to preserve some of the open space to later use, until we really decide what we're going to do with it. That's a thought. And by the way, I love the kayak ramp. So thank you for including that.
Anything else, Mr. Ernst?
Last question, as you go through this, I think you might want to think about where a pavilion or restroom should go. Ultimately, in a Phase 3, we need to do that. So we should be mindful of anything that you put in, how it might connect in with the existing sewer or anything that is there, just to be thoughtful about how you do that. Because ultimately, you know, we've been told before that, you know, any park, anything that is used by others, needs to have restrooms and some kind of shelter. So as you get into the project, it might be worthwhile to think about how or lay it with the design framework of what you think it might be for the next phase. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Ernst. Commissioner Engel?
I just have one question. I know we're putting picnic tables in, and you don't have... on your diagram, you don't have any locations. Do you have a rough idea of where you want to put the picnic tables? And I'm hoping that they are going to be located in shaded areas?
We had envisioned putting the picnic tables down by the intercoastal. But as working on this concept, I think you could have picnic tables down by the intercoastal, but also maybe introduce a bench midway on the walkway down to the intercoastal.
Okay.
In shaded areas, for sure.
Yeah, definitely. You might want to have a couple of tables closer to A1A, only because there are people that, you know... I know when my kids were little, if we were picnicking or going to the beach, we packed up like we were running away from home. And so you might want to have one or two tables closer along the path to A1A. I agree with Mr. Ernst that we need to have... we need to be mindful of the open spaces because we're going to be doing something with them as time goes on. But that's all I have. And I think you guys are doing so far, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, a couple of questions. The road is not going to be open, right? We're going to keep the gate on the road?
Correct.
Okay. So for the kayak launch, basically, it's either going to be people just paddling up from across up to there to use the park area or the beach or whatever. It's most likely not people that are going to be taking their kayaks from A1A down to there, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we should probably take the word "launch," remove that from the label, and just call it a beach. It's more of a destination point if someone were to come paddle or kayak there.
No, that's perfect because actually, across from there, almost across from there, is that beach that people go to, that take their kayaks to, that's at Lake Wyman, that people have made a trail. So they can go from there over to this one and use this beach also. And then the fields, is that going to be like turf? I mean, like grass?
Right now, it's just existing grass.
Is there actual grass there now?
Planted, yes.
Okay. But it's not irrigated?
Correct.
So it says in here that we are putting in turf irrigation?
That would just be where new plant material is going to be located, such as any plant material we would use for buffering along the houses along the north side, or possibly up near your signage along A1A. That would just... it's not for anything existing. It would just be for proposed plant material.
Okay. So we're not going to be putting in any plants as of right now, like no butterfly-attracting type of flowers or anything like that? It's just going to be what's there, and we're taking out the Brazilian peppers, and that's it?
No, we plan on putting in some proposed plant material, possibly for buffering the homes on the north side from the park.
Okay. So on the north side of the road?
Yes.
Okay.
And once again, it kind of depends on... we plan on clearing Brazilian pepper from about 20 to 30 feet north of the road. There's a lot of pepper along the north side of that road.
Okay.
Once we clear that, we may need to mitigate a little bit with some native vegetation. And we say temporary irrigation because whatever we would use would be able to sustain itself after we turn that irrigation off.
Okay. Is there any way you can use, like wildflower-type, you know, butterfly garden-type of attracting plants that are native to Florida?
Yes.
You know, that look pretty and... but are, you know, useful at the same time?
A fire bush is a tractor of butterflies. We would want to use something that is hardy and something that would be around for a while. A lot of the butterfly plants don't last. You know, they're more of a perennial-type thing. But we would be looking for something that would be longer-lasting. But I'm sure we could find something, definitely.
Okay. And then I really like the idea, and I know Andrea, I think, is on the call, or she will be at some point, but she'll be happy about the art in public places. And then in terms of the volunteers, is there any way to incorporate volunteers into this process?
Yes, absolutely. What we'll do is, when we put a schedule together, we can work together with the committee on some longer timetables with the schedule. So let's say, the Mulch Trail, for example, we could allocate, I'll say, 14 days to doing the Mulch Trail. If we did it with just a subcontractor, we could probably do it in three or four days. But if we wanted to extend it to allow volunteers to come assist in laying and spreading the mulch, certainly do that. Some of the... I'm going to call it gentle clearing, where we're not using machinery or big power tools, say, down by the beach, we can certainly have volunteers come and pull down some vegetation and load it into the trucks or the dumpsters. So when we outline the schedule, we will itemize certain tasks that we could incorporate volunteers and let you guys know, and then we'll put it out to anyone who's interested.
Okay, awesome. And then is that... would that be the most sustainable option in terms of the path? Would that be mulch? Like eucalyptus mulch or whatever you're using?
It could...
I mean, are we going to have to spray weed killer so that weeds don't grow through the mulch and things like that? Or...
It will have to be... it'll have to be maintained. Anything that you would do there, either mulch or if you... you know, there's egg roach also, but we... I don't know if we priced that we could.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, anything like that would have to have regular maintenance. And the city does maintain this park. I saw them out there. I think I was there... was it Friday? Or it could have been even Monday. They were out there, they were mowing the grass, and they were actually trimming the Brazilian pepper. So we'll get rid of the Brazilian pepper so they don't have to do that task anymore. But...
Yeah, I mean, whatever is just the most sustainable and most easy to maintain, I would say, would be ideal there. You know what I mean? And I think that's about it. I mean, it's a good start, and I'm glad we're going to be having it by the end of the year. And it'll be a bit cooler when we can lay the mulch.
Yes.
And yeah, I think it's great.
And then just another thing with maintenance. I was talking to Dr. John Richardson this morning. And also, so for the Brazilian pepper, we're not removing all of it because there's a lot more than the 2 acres or 2.5 acres that's there. And there's also scabola, there's also Australian pines that are also invasive. But you would also have to have a regular maintenance program to keep the pepper from growing back because that's what's happened. I believe the site was cleared years ago, and I'm not sure. I think Grant Thornborough told me it was maybe eight years ago or so. And a lot of that pepper has grown back. So there would have to be a program for maintenance and to keep it from growing back.
So, Brienne, is that something that we would like to talk to Nora about and find out how often we would clear it out?
Yes, we'll put together a plan.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Rollins?
I'm just so disappointed I can't bring my chainsaw and help out with the clearing. Seriously, it's a good plan. I do have a number of questions. First of all, talking about the Brazilian peppers. If the Brazilian peppers were completely eliminated, because they are exotic and invasive, would that open up more of the area to green space? I mean, that would be a substantial change in that. And if so, I think at some point, we ought to consider that, you know, maybe not with this plan now since we're on a tight budget, but certainly in the future. Does that make sense, Carol, to talk about that?
Yes, you would have more... definitely have more green space, removing all of the pepper and the invasive species. There's also the scabola is in the southeast corner. It takes up a huge chunk of land there. You can see it as you're driving by on A1A.
Well, it's something for us to consider in the future because, you know, I think that, I mean, the last time I was there, it seemed like we had a lot more green space than what we have now because it's grown in a good bit since that time. Just a number of questions. Along the intercoastal there, I know there was... the seawall there was in pretty bad shape and was in some spots where you have the kayak retrieval area where it was overgrown with, I'm not sure whether... what kind of vegetation it was, but it may have been, whether it was sea grapes or some other type of product that may not be removable without a permit. Are there any issues with that area where we're talking about as far as the kayak, you know, area where people could enter the property from the intercoastal?
Yeah, I'll bring that up. From a... we're talking just kayaks coming in and coming out.
Sure.
We can leave all of those native species there. We may have to trim a branch or two, literally only a branch or two of a sea grape, to allow a bit more room. But as it is right now, you can easily enough get a few kayaks in and out of there, just the way that it is. And once we clear some of the non-native species from the beach to the interior coming to the east, it'll open up even more room in that area.
I know it's pretty shallow right there up against that seawall. Is there going to be an issue with the seawall where it has to be removed so it's easier to get up? And if you do that, are we going to be exposed to erosion from the constant traffic down the intercoastal?
So we don't have any intentions of removing the portion of seawall that's there.
Okay.
The portion that is there is not in good shape. However, the kayak launch, kayak beach area, let's call it, is to the south of that existing seawall and really has no... the seawall doesn't have any bearing on this kayak beach.
Okay.
The seawall can stay as it is. The kayak beach is going to... we'll have plenty of room to get in and get out. Probably have a good 20 by 30-foot area there just for kayak beach, let's call it, where you can pull the kayaks up on the sand and then come up underneath to the trees. And those existing sea grapes and Australian pines that are there, they provide lots of good shade and canopy for that area.
Good. Do you know... are there still pilings there just to the north of the property where there was once a dock? Are they still there? Are they totally rotted away?
No, those pilings are still there. The seawall that's part of it is in bad shape, but those pilings are still a part of... the pilings are still intact.
Yeah, this is something you may not know the answer to, but if we were to apply to the Corps of Engineers for a dock there, do you think that by having those pilings there that would grandfather us in if we wanted to restore that?
I can't speak to that. That's a question for Army Corps.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The... you're talking about a mulch along the trail there. I know we have other parks that have mulch in there. Is that any type of... cause any type of a stability area for senior citizens walking on it? You know, is that something that is going to be, I don't want to say a trip hazard, but something that could cause some problems for, you know, seniors and people who are using a walker and/or any other type of equipment, you know, like durable medical equipment, like wheelchairs and things? That would be kind of tough for them to navigate, would you not think? Yeah. Where I was going with that is, in the future, commissioners, is I'm thinking maybe once we establish where we want this trail to be, maybe we think about some type of... thinking of these interlocking blocks or something else, you know, some type of porous material that you could use. It'd be a lot more stable than mulch, just for discussion. On the walk through the hammock area there, is there any thought about putting a split-rail fence along there to keep people from wandering and migrating into the hammock area? Do you think that would be an issue that we'd be having to deal with?
We haven't thought about a split-rail fence in that area. We were really just thinking about clearing it and providing the trail through. There's no reason why it can't be done later if it becomes an issue. But, I mean, personally, I don't think that you need probably to keep anybody out in that area yet, unless it's determined later that...
Yeah. Well, I know how our nature lovers are, like to explore. And was... did you go through the hammock? I heard talk at one point of there being Indian midens in there. Is that any truth to that rumor? You didn't see anything evidence to that effect, did you?
We could... you cannot go through that area right now. There's too much Brazilian pepper. I mean, I didn't do that. It's solid. But I have heard rumors.
I can meet you there on the weekend with your chainsaw if you'd like.
I have a Bush accident chainsaw. I'll be happy to help you navigate that. That'd be a pleasure.
Sounds fun.
The... probably one of the final questions, you know, you have the paved road down the center of this, and we're not having vehicle traffic on there, of course. But I'm just wondering, we're at the end of the paved road where you have an open space where you'd walk south to where the trail is. I'm just wondering if you wouldn't want to put something, a path, you know, from leading from the trail up to the paved road? Because that's... people are going to take that route, I'm sure. And I'm just thinking, maybe we could go ahead and be a little preemptive and put down mulch in that area right there so it would be a regular path. I mean, I just... anytime you go somewhere where there's an opening where people could take a shortcut, they're going to. And I think that's probably one that would do it. And from a standpoint of the Mulch Trail through the hammock area there, it is... I hate to even bring it up, is there any type of a security issue that we might be dealing with there, you know, as far as later in the evening? Is that place there a spot where somebody might be a little bit nervous about walking through there late in the afternoon? Speculating. I don't know. We're always concerned about security and being in the insurance business. I'm always concerned about that aspect. Just a thought. And the other... I think that between the other four commissioners and me, I've exhausted all my questions. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Rollins. I do have some questions for you all. As far as permitting issues with the state or canoty or water management, what kind of a timeline are we looking at?
As far as permits to the state for this park?
Well, for whatever we need permits for, you know, with the city or with canoty or water management.
For the extent of this work, our permit should be limited to the city of Boca Raton. And I would think, once we present the plans to the city, that we should be able to get a permit turned around within two to three weeks.
So you don't have to deal with any other agencies as far as permitting?
Not as far as this goes because we're not doing any... we're not putting in a dock. We're not doing any coastal mitigation. The shores of the kayak beach on the intercoastal, we're not modifying those at all. All we're doing is taking out non-native plant life that's inside of the property. So everything that's on the intercoastal side on the beach to the intercoastal is really untouched. That's just going to remain natural. And because we don't have mechanical, electrical, plumbing, or civil with storm, sewer, sanitary, things of that sort, it should be a relatively quick approval process through the city of Boca. Quick review process and review to approval.
What about the making everything ADA compliant as far as, like we were talking about with the pathways? Obviously, a wheelchair could go down the roadway. And how about the ADA-compliant table or picnic table or whatever? Some seating or something for them?
You want to start?
Okay. Well, as far as the roadway... As far as the roadway goes, that would be about the only ADA accessible route for, um, a wheelchair or a walker. Because I, we're going through the mulch would be, that would be tre- treacherous and, and inaccessible. So, um, I'm not sure about the grades of the road. Um, up near A1A, there's a slight slope. And I, I cannot tell you whether that is ADA accessible, you know, that meets the requirements for ADA, but, um, if you were to get down to the end of that road. That clearing there is a natural clearing and it, there's grass there already or it's, um, it, it's a cleared field, open space and it's flat. So some could actually get a, get a walkway at the end of the roadway and then, and if a path was paved, it could go to, you know, the kayak launch area.
Okay.
I'll just add to that, uh, because I'm very familiar with building to ADA requirements. The mulch path would not be ADA accessible. It's, it's not. And the, the park not being accessible to vehicular traffic, it currently does not have any ADA accessibility. The slope of the entrance road exceeds the minimum, sorry, exceeds the maximum requirement for ADA. ADA requirements, one, one and 12, so one inch, uh, one inch and 12 inches and it's, it's far greater than that, far steeper. So the only way that an ADA, uh, the only ADA access you would have is, is driving in through the gates, driving down to the end of the road to the west as Carol mentioned. And when you get there, then there is, uh, there's flat ground. Now, there are no ADA, uh, parking spaces or provisions for parking spaces currently, uh, in this phase one. As a part of, say, phase two or beyond, we can certainly, uh, put a parking space there, do an ADA compliant path to kayak beach, even put a side-by-side ADA compliant path to the mulch path. But in this current plan with phase one, uh, there are, there are no provisions for ADA accessibility provided to us with the park as it is. Uh, so we can, we can discuss that further, happy to do that, uh, but let us know your take on, on what we need to do to accommodate and then how we need to go about making that into plan.
Okay, and what is the width of the gate going to be?
Uh, that gate would be a four foot wide gate.
Okay.
Forty-eight inches.
Okay. Um, Brienne, do you have any questions for the team?
Muted. I do not. I don't have any questions.
Mr. Goran, do you?
I don't. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity and I think your questions about permitting were, were very timely and very applicable. Thank you for asking them.
Okay. Well, if everybody's in agreement, let's open up public requests and Brienne has a letter from one of our neighbors to the, uh, to the north and then we'll open up the, the phone conversations.
Okay, the one email that we received, uh, is of dear commissioners. It looks like you. I feel like there's a lot of echo.
There's an echo.
Can you guys hear me still?
We can.
Okay. Dear commissioners, it looks like you have selected a terrific team for Ocean Strand to head up the proposed park endeavor. That said, and as an adjacent neighbor to the park, please know we all love our pets. However, I wanted to share some recent incidents that have happened in our neighborhood because we have concerns relating to unfettered, unrestricted animals here. Ocean Strand has signs currently in place which say no trespassing and there is already a leash law on public property, but on a daily basis now, many people when walking their dogs come to the open area like Ocean Strand and feel compelled to take their dogs' leashes off and let them run. I've seen it many times, even with signage and leash laws. Over the years, we've had to escort a number of dogs and their owners off our property. It has not been pleasant for either party. I want to share a couple of recent unfortunate incidences in the vicinity of Ocean Strand with the board and its legal counsel. On November of 2019, um, Channel 25 reported on two dogs which killed another neighbor's puppy 200 feet north of Ocean Strand on private property. And then there's a, a website a- address which this will be part of the public, this email will be part of the public record. Approximately three years ago, a woman who lives in Riviera subdivision just north of Pomato Park Road in A1A was walking her two dogs and turned them loose. The dogs entered an adjacent private property and killed our family cat. As you are well aware of encouraging unregulated animal access opens the district to potential serious legal ramifications. If this park is going to be dog friendly, it is my opinion that it should be supervised, monitored by park rangers during times it is open. I appreciate your consideration on this matter regarding Ocean Strand Park. Respectfully submitted, Dave Petrazelli, 920 Lago Mar Lane, Boca Raton 3331.
Thank you Brienne. Okay, if you'd like to open up the, um, the phone lines and, and monitor that for us, please?
Sure, if, if you are interested in speaking at this point or asking questions, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. Um, yeah, star nine will raise your hand and then we can unmute you.
And please keep your comments to this Ocean Strand project for five minutes. And Joanne, would you please time them?
We have, um. We're ending in six two zero two, you are un. You are unmuted.
Please give your name and address before speaking.
I'm sorry, they're not unmuted, hold on. Okay, uh, six two zero two, you are unmuted, go ahead.
Hi, uh, it's Marcy Schatzman, Boca Voice. I have a quick question for you. Are you only developing one side of this?
Are you just developing one? By one side, you mean one side of A1A?
Yes.
Correct. We're only developing right now the, uh, west side of A1A.
Thank you.
Marcy, would you give us your address, please?
Um, do I have to give you my home address or I'm working from home right now? So I'm not really comfortable doing that. I'm working remotely like most people are.
Not required, Madam Chair, but if you can give a, a business address just for the record, that would be useful. If, if she chooses not to do that, she has a choice not to. You, you can ask.
No, uh, yeah, they're in the process of moving the company, so I'm not really comfortable doing that either. I don't really want to give an address.
Thanks Marcy.
Thank you.
Okay Brienne.
Mr. Verstandig, you are live, go ahead.
Terrific. I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you to Aaron for pushing and getting this opened. I just want to say, this is a monumental occasion and I really say thank you to the Beach and Park District for finally opening up Ocean Strand. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have others?
Um, okay. Oh. Yes, we do.
He's done speaking.
I'm sorry, just a second, I don't have you, hold on. I have somebody with their hand raised. Go ahead, who's speaking?
Robert Duquette, uh, 53501 Northwest Third Terrace. Hello?
Go for it, Mr. Duquette, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great questions there, especially about the security. And, uh, I know at the last meeting there were some questions about whether or not this was going to be a dog-friendly park and there was going to be some contact with the city. Uh, what was the outcome of that? Is this gonna, are dogs going to be allowed or not allowed in this park?
Go ahead Brienne.
Oh, there's currently a city ordinance that, that prohibits dogs from being in parks.
Okay, so that would, uh, how will the, how will the district, uh, manage that so that, uh, dogs are not allowed in the park? And if they are in the park, of course, you know, that they're cleaned up after. And, uh, also, I just want to know if, is there a master plan for other activities, uh, in this, um, area? And will this meet the, uh, the city's or the state's ADA compliance, uh, with regard to, uh, accessibility? Thank you.
Nate, would you like to answer this question?
The current phase one does not have provisions for ADA accessibility, uh, and then it's up for more discussion for future phases to bring in ADA accessibility for this park.
And Brienne, as far as the, um, monitoring for the dogs to keep them out?
Oh, it'll be done the same way the city does it in every park that they manage for us and for themselves. They have oversight, the rangers go through, I mean, any park we're at, if there's dogs in there and there's a problem, they call the rangers and the rangers address it.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Duquette?
He's already muted.
Uh, one last thing, uh, has there been any type of our, of our environmental study done on the seagrass, uh, along the seawall or along the proposed beach area?
Uh, we don't have one that, that's probably been done recently. I, I can't tell you whether, if, if there's been one done previously, but we are not, uh, we are not touching the seagrass, uh, we are not touching the mangroves, we are only removing invasive, uh, plant material. So down by that beach area, uh, we would like to, or one of the concepts really is to open up that area, um, visually and that's why we will be removing invasives there. Um, there are existing mangroves nearby, they're mostly to the south, uh, of that beach area. And I just wanted to also say that where that is located, there is a natural beach there and that is one of the reasons why, why we chose that location to really expand on what's there naturally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised right now.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments to, uh, our team?
Madam Chair, this is Craig. Um, my one question is to the team, could it be, is the problem on the ADA side of things, could that be addressed just at the front of the park where the, um, the proposed path gate is? Um, is, if you made that some way, somehow accessible to the road easily, that would get you, uh, someone could use the road instead and then you'd have, uh, some kind of, you know, from the road down there by the boat area, um, a more, I guess a, you know, lack of a better word, whether it's concrete or asphalt, something that could be ADA. How mu- could you address the ADA part of it? And that way, we, at least we could have an open ADA complaint.
To answer your question, yes, it can be addressed. In the, in the budget constraints we were given, it is not addressed, again, for this phase. Uh, some of the things we would have to do is check the grades right now from A1A, uh, onto that approach, onto that road headed west towards the intercoastal, as I mentioned earlier. Currently, the grade of that road is, exceeds ADA requirement, uh, or ADA minimums, I should say. Uh, but yes, there are provisions that can be made to go from A1A, let's say from the path that runs parallel to A1A, uh, to enter the site. That would get you to a, uh, a more level ground of that road and then from the road you could get to the west, uh, to the end of the road and we could additionally make provisions, again, not under this budget or those budget constraints, but in future, uh, make provisions to get a, a path then from existing road to the beach.
Could you give us estimates and, and something that the board could consider as a change order to this project?
Certainly, I can put that together for you.
And is there an option on the, on the west side of the park where it goes, the mulch trail goes down to the kayak beach? Is there any, uh, I, I don't know how moby mats have worked at the beach, but is that something that could be used if, if we were to make it ADA compliant at the entrance by the pedestrian gate?
Say that one more time?
Are moby mats an option for that side of the park down by the. To get out there?
Mats down by the actual beach or from the road to the beach?
No, not from the road to the beach. If we made this asphalt path, um, ADA compliant for them to get onto and then moby mats from the end of that onto the kayak launch area.
Yeah, that, that is an option.
Okay.
Do you want me to price that as a, another option?
Could you?
Sure, certainly.
Carol, I do have another question. Um, when we walked the property with Mr. Petrazelli, who's, um, on the north end, um, he's very concerned about people entering his property. What are, are you planning on just having plants there or will there be a fence or how are you going to ensure that he's, his property will be, um, will not be, uh, trespassed on?
Yeah, right now, when you go down to the end of the road, there is a little, little opening there. Uh, we thought we could use plant material to close the area off and also put up some park etiquette signs that would, uh, tell the public to please stay on the paths and, uh, not to venture, you know, further north. I mean, there's really no reason for them to go north, uh, from the road in the first place. Uh, I think we should, you know, until that area is further developed, um, I think we should encourage people to, to stay on the paths and stay, stay on the roadway and not, not go that way. So I, I would say between signage and some plant material, that would just kind of create a little edge and buffer. So we were, that's what we were envisioning.
Okay, thank you. Anything else commissioners? Well, we thank you very much for helping us out and we're looking forward to opening this park. It's going to be wonderful. I think it's going to be a great thing for our whole community. Um, commissioners, do you have any future agenda items you'd like to address? Uh, we do have a meeting coming up Monday. Okay, we're good there. Um, I believe. Mr. Engel?
Um, yeah, I owe you, uh, move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Joanne, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Joanne?
Yes, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mogulsey?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Meeting is, is adjourned. Please stay safe and healthy and we'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next, see you next week.
Very much, Carol and Nate.
See you next week, thank you.